Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Monday night, August the 2nd, 2021 work session. We'll say welcome to the viewing audience out there and thank you for those that are here with us, joining us. We're going to start with a moment of silence. A moment of silence will be observed in memory of Madison Fink, who passed away unexpectedly on July 21st, 2021. If you'll please join us, thank you. Thank you, and our thoughts and prayers go out to the family. If you'll now join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Board members, may I have a motion that we amend the agenda to add the new superintendent reception and swearing-in ceremony for August the 16th, 2021, which is a Monday as well, at 5:00 p.m.? So moved. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? And now we will move on to approval of our August the 2nd, 2021 closed-session agenda items, starting with 7.01, Policy 4130 discretionary admission. And we will have Jonathan. John, I'm sorry. Mr. Basilese to the podium. And just key up your mic, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. Thank you for having me tonight. This revision to Policy 4130 is just to put into words what has been our practice for some time. We want to ensure that if there are citizens of Cabarrus County who also live in the Conapulis City Schools Zone who have been approved for hardship. Okay, so we're going to backtrack on that for just a moment. This is the space availability issue for a matter that we spoke to you about just a few moments ago. Sorry, I thought it was a policy item. So in essence, we've discussed the need for hardship and placement for a family that had to relocate to the district temporarily and who is currently enrolled in one of our elementary schools, Mount Pleasant Elementary School, and I wanted your approval to allow them to continue to enroll, to be enrolled in that school.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion that the Board has-
Is there a place available, right? At the school?
It's my belief that the space is available, but ultimately I leave that to your discretion and your judgment.
Somebody's got places available, right? Okay.
We just had the recommendation. You recommended it, correct?
I did, yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Walter.
I'll second.
A second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All good. Okay, and we are going to move on to 8.01, which is to approve the superintendent's contract. And I'm sure everyone is excited to hear that we have appointed, or will be appointing, a new superintendent. And I'm actually going to just read so it's consistent with what goes out to the staff as well. The Cabarrus County Board of Education is thrilled to announce the selection and election of Dr. John Kapiki as the next superintendent of Cabarrus County Schools. Dr. Kapiki will take office on Monday, August the 16th, 2021. During the search process, the Board carefully reviewed applications from a diverse field of 14 excellent candidates. Although many qualified candidates applied, the Board felt that Dr. Kapiki's experience, leadership, and dedication to students and staff would best serve Cabarrus County Schools, students, employees, and the community for years to come. The Board is confident that Dr. Kapiki will lead the school system to an even higher achievement. Dr. Kapiki has enjoyed a long and very successful career in public education spanning more than 28 years in Pennsylvania. Most recently, he has served as superintendent of Central Bucks School District in Doylestown, Pennsylvania, where he successfully developed and implemented a five-year vision for the school district highlighting areas of technology, finance, facilities and operations, teaching and learning, and community connections. Prior to joining Central Bucks School District, Dr. Kapiki spent a total of five years as superintendent of Altoona Area School District and Forest City Regional School District. In addition, he previously served as a principal and assistant principal for Scranton School District and an assistant principal for Western Wayne School District. Dr. Kapiki began his career in 1992 as a high school social studies teacher in Scranton School District. In addition to his K-12 experience, he has also worked as an adjunct professor at Keystone College. Dr. Kapiki has an impressive academic background as well. He received a bachelor's degree in secondary education and a master's degree in school leadership from Marywood University. He went on to earn a doctoral degree in educational administration from Temple University. Dr. Kapiki is currently a member of the American Association of Supervisors and Administrators and the American Association of School Administrators. A quote from Dr. Kapiki, "I am excited to join Cabarrus County Schools and look forward to working with the Cabarrus County Board of Education and the outstanding group of educators, staff, and community, as well as engaging and collaborating with the community. Furthermore, I am committed to ensuring that Cabarrus County Schools students and families continue to receive a first-class education," Dr. Kapiki said. A swearing-in ceremony is planned for 6:00 p.m. on August the 16th, and the Board of Education will host a meet-and-greet reception prior to the ceremony. Please join the Board in congratulating and welcoming Dr. Kapiki as the new superintendent of Cabarrus County Schools. And Board members, I would just like to give you an opportunity. If you'd like to make a statement, we can do so at this point in time. Ms. Adcock?
Yes, I would just say that I'm really excited for Dr. Kapiki to get here and to help us to continue the excellence that we serve our community with our schools.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, and I'm looking forward to John being here with us. We want to thank Brian for all he has done for us for the months that he has helped us. You've done an excellent job, and we look forward to still working with you and you working with John. Thank you, Brian.
Mr. Farr?
No comment.
Mr. Walter?
I'd also like to thank Brian for the work he's done for us several months. He's really been impressive. And Dr. Kapiki has a great track record, and he certainly has done his homework. He's done a lot of research on Cabarrus County Schools and demonstrated that when we were talking, talking to him. So I think he's going to hit the ground running.
Ms. Blackwell?
Sure. So I, just like the rest of you, are very excited to work with Dr. Kapiki. He's very impressive to talk to and seems to be very excited to come here and start a new chapter in his life, and we're really excited to have him here and grateful. And to Brian, thank you so much for all of the hard work that you've done, and I know that you and Dr. Kapiki will work really well together, so we're very excited. Thank you.
Ms. Sandage?
I just want to start off by saying thank you, Brian. You have stayed with us through the hardest of times, and that does not go unnoticed, I'm sure, not by anybody up here and not by our community and/or the folks that you have worked with every day, so I appreciate that. And I'm just going to keep it simple. Welcome, Mr. Kapiki or Dr. Kapiki, welcome to the Cabarrus County School System.
Ms. Berry, I know you're new, but would you like to take the opportunity to make a comment?
I'd like to echo everyone's thanks to Mr. Schultz. He was with us through such a tumultuous time, and I think I can speak for all CCS educators in expressing our thanks, and we are looking forward to getting to know Dr. Kapiki. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also would like to echo those comments. As Board Chair, you have been absolutely great to work with. There's not a time that the phone doesn't ring that you don't answer or text back, and we appreciate the efforts that you've made. You've taken us places and gotten us to places, you know, that we're very proud to be at right at this moment. So thank you for your hard work. We look forward to still working with you, and we think you and Dr. Kapiki will make an awesome team.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. With that, I'll take a minute just to do 9.01, Board Chair comments. Just a couple of clarifications regarding the motion that was made prior.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, before you move on, can we have a motion and a second to approve the contract?
Well, I think we should do that.
And then also, there would be a motion and a second for 8.02 about the swearing-in. I think you put it to the agenda. We just need to vote on that when you get a chance.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you. I will do that. So may I have a motion that the superintendent's contract is approved as presented? So moved. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay, and let's move back to 8.02. May I have a motion to approve the called meeting on August the 16th, 2021 at 5:00 p.m. for a reception and at 6:00 p.m. for the swearing-in ceremony for the new superintendent, Dr. John Kapiki? So moved. I have a motion by Ms. Adcock and a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right. Mr. White, did I cover all that and move on now?
Yes, thank you.
That's a lot of moving parts and pieces tonight. Okay, so for Board Chair comments, again, I'll just state that regarding the motion that was made at the last meeting, we assumed that all would know that since the order was to expire on July 30th or 31st, that that would take effect immediately, and I think there was a little bit of confusion, so it should be known that that was to be effective immediately due to those circumstances, if nothing else. And then also, whether it was to include teachers and staff, and it was to include teachers and staff, it should have said for all, and I think that clarification needed to be made. So Brian, do you have anything to say about that, or are we good? Do you want to make a comment as well?
No, just say that we'll continue to, aside from the mask being optional, we'll continue to follow the Strong Schools Toolkit as our guide for everything from cleaning to quarantining to testing. So we will, we'll continue to look to that for the additional guidance on governing COVID-19.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, could I ask for clarification on something since Brian was not here that night? Because there was some questions asked because within that motion, we asked for clarification on distancing. And what my clarification would be was whether we could get distancing, especially in the middle school and, you know, three-feet distancing. Can we get that distancing? Because I know there's been questions asked. We wanted three-feet distancing, and also there was six-feet distancing for adults. Now, can that be obtained, the three-feet distancing? That was one of the questions. The other clarification I would like to have is on quarantine. What is the, what do we have on quarantine? Because I know that we just got an email that we do have quarantine now on Wolfmeadow, 43 quarantine. What does our quarantine actually consist of? What is our quarantine? What do we do?
Sure. Thank you for asking those clarifications. So when it comes to distancing, we do have some concerns about not being able to obtain three feet, and we'll operate like we did second semester last school year that will, you know, in those cases, we'll maximize the distancing. I give, like, health class would be an example, where we have sometimes up to 40 students in those health classrooms. So that will be a challenge to maintain three feet in those classrooms, typically middle school and high school, obviously for the health. But I would say in an overwhelming majority of our cases, we'll be able to maintain three feet, and then we'll maximize the distance as much as we can when we're not able to do that. Okay, and then in terms of the vaccination, so the first number I'll say is zero. So it's, you have zero days of quarantine if you have, if you're vaccinated, and you have zero days of quarantine if you've had COVID-19 within the last, with the verbiages, three months, or the equivalent to about 90 days. So if you are exposed to some of it with COVID and you've been vaccinated, you quarantine zero days. Or if you've had COVID within the last 90 days and are not exhibiting symptoms, you are quarantined for zero days. The next number is seven, so you would be quarantined for seven days if you are exposed to someone that has COVID-19 and you do not exhibit symptoms, and after five days, you receive a negative test. The next number will be 10. So if you, you would be quarantined for 10 days if you do not exhibit symptoms, and then you can return to school. If you've been exposed to someone and you do not exhibit symptoms, you can return to school after 10 days. And then additionally, in addition, the default is 14 days, but then any of those scenarios apply, a zero day, a seven day, or a 10-day quarantine based on the scenario.
How are those children taught, though? Because all we were offering was, was the academy. How are those children taught, though, if they're having to be out? Because, you know, at the end of the year, we said, "We're not offering anything else," and that's my main question. Are those children just out of school? Are they being, how are they being taught when they're out? That's my big question.
Yeah, so we're looking at ways to post things on Canvas, and Ms., Dr. Hill and CNI team are also working on that to delineate that for our administrators and our teachers.
Thank you.
Can you clarify something for me too, Brian? Did you say that we cannot socially distance every single last one of our classrooms? Did I hear that correctly?
In some situations, we'll not be able to maintain three feet of social distancing.
But what we agreed on last week, if I'm not mistaken, says that we will have three feet of social distancing. Is that what I remember correctly?
Which is what was used in the toolkit, correct? That was the recommendation from the toolkit?
Yeah, the recommendation in the toolkit is three, is three feet for unvaccinated students.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Sandage?
It doesn't. So I'm trying to figure out, we are saying that we are going to provide three feet of social distancing for 100% of our classes, but we can't do that.
Are you asking me?
I'm asking a question. You just, and I'm not trying to be funny, you just said that some of our classrooms is going to be a problem to guarantee three feet of social distancing, but the motion from last week says that we will guarantee three feet of social distancing in our classes.
Yeah, well-
It didn't say guaranteed. It stated that we were just absolutely-
Can we read the motion?
I'm not sure if we have it here tonight, but we, all we used was what was in the actual toolkit, which was the recommendation. But I don't, it's no different than what we ended the year with either. I mean, we basically are doing what we were doing at the end of the year, correct?
Colonel, are we able to read the motion from last week, please?
So I guess I need to know, where are you going with this?
I understood that we were guaranteeing, or that we were saying that we were going to be able to three-feet socially distance in all of our classrooms as it was discussed last week. And then we were going to clarify that with Brian today in this meeting, and Brian is saying that we cannot three-feet social distance in all of our classrooms. So if those classrooms, we are not able to three-feet socially distance, what changes for those students? We do have parents that do not want their kids in school with mask optional. So what are the options for those parents, would be my question. What are the options for those students, would be my question, if we can't three-feet social distance in classes?
So Brian, last year, y'all gave us updated reports that told us when that was not possible, where it wasn't possible, where they were having a hard time at. This is why I talked about the task force being reinstated, just so that if we start getting challenges again, you know, if there's something else we need to address, what are your, what is your thoughts on? Because last year, y'all didn't have as many issues with complying, so I guess this year, when everybody's back full fours, maybe that will look a little different. What is your thoughts on that?
So we, I can find out where it's projected where we won't have three feet. I gave an example of a, that I was provided, of a, like a health classroom where that will be difficult to do. So we can explore that, and then we can use the task force recommendations of utilizing, you know, all the space in the school, and there may be times when that won't suffice.
Because we don't, I don't think, did we actually do that last year? We said it, the task force recommended it, but did we ever have to actually implement that?
What, where classrooms met and other, oh yeah, we had classrooms event in gyms, we had classrooms that met in media centers, they utilized all available space.
So that would be kind of the thought moving into the next year, the new year, of what we left with, we would do, they would all be trained to do that and use that process, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would say that, you know, if you remember when we finished the year, we had about roughly 60% of our students that have, you know, that came back in person. So, you know, the difference now is it's more than 60%.
Okay, right. So I guess right now, hang on. This, right now is the time to have this conversation. I think we all need to make some comments of where we are tonight, because what we said was, that was the motion to start. School has not started. We'll get updates, you know, as we move into the new year. What it affected was, and the reason we needed to do it when we did, and we didn't have a special called meeting, that was just added to an agenda on a called, the meeting for the superintendent's search. So we didn't call a special called meeting. I think some of the, some people got confused with that. But I would like to know tonight, you know, we have the business meeting next week, is there anyone that wants to add that as a discussion item for next week? Brian is on those calls every Monday morning. I was on it last Monday, that gives us, you've got the slides, you'll get them now, you know, we'll start the process just like we did last year. We'll get the numbers. They're on that Monday morning call every, every Monday at 9:00. So we'll get that updated information as we move through. And of course, this Board always has and knows that it has the option to pull something back if we need to, you know, according to what's going on. So I would just like to have some comments. If there's anything else, I've heard from Ms. Sandage, and I would like to start with Ms. Adcock.
I don't have any comments. I mean, I think that since we have, is it two weeks before school starts, that we have time for the CCS leadership team to actually look into what we're talking about and see if there are classrooms or areas where we need to think outside the box.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, I would like also for them to, we've got numerous emails. The other question that has been asked, I mean, we've got your parents that say, "I don't want my children to wear masks," but then we have the other ones that say, "No, for different reasons. My children need to be wearing masks," but we, and they've asked if they can open back up the virtual academy. I don't know if that's an option. I would like to find out, because they, for some reason, their children cannot, for healthy reasons, for different things, is this a possibility to help, open back up the virtual academy to let them be doing that? Or do we have the option to do something else? Because we had said last year, we were going to cut out our other options. Is this a possibility to put another option back on the table for these parents that do not have their children, you know, you know, with the blend of mask and unmask? Or do we have another option available for these parents? But some have asked to have the virtual academy option opened back up to them. Is that something we can do?
So I'll say that if someone has a medical concern, then they can email me directly. They can also email John Basilese directly, and if there's a medical concern related to being exposed to COVID, we will certainly address that. We have opened the virtual academy three separate times since February for families that, for all families and families that were in Plan C last year. So that opportunity has been out there for them. So all a family needs to do if they want to look into that option, if it's medically related, they can email me or email John Basilese.
Well, there's been quite a few that we have had email us, so just tell them to do, send it to you or-
John Basilese.
John Basilese. Y'all hear that? So the ones that have emailed me, please redo that.
And then what I'd say, Ms. Carpenter, is that, you know, one of my, you know, and I've shared this with multiple members of the Board, you know, two of my goals in returning to school are really to make sure that our staff members are not, they are not in, and I'll just say, they're not the enforcers of vaccinations and they are not the enforcers of masks. You've made it optional so that they don't have to be the enforcers of vaccinations and masks. That is a terrible place to put an educator in the middle of, hey, do you have your vaccination or do you have your mask? And so that's a terrible place to put an educator. So, so you guys have taken care of that through the mask optional piece. The other, the other thing is, is we found out last year that virtual instruction was not effective for a lot of our students. And our virtual academy was not, you know, we had plans to have a virtual academy in place prior to COVID. We did not put the virtual academy in place because of COVID. We accelerated the, the implementation of the virtual academy due to COVID, but the idea was implemented a long time. It was actually supposed to open this year, was actually supposed to be the inaugural year, and there is a specific model with that. There's a specific teaching and learning model that does involve a face-to-face option once a week for those students. It's like a lot of our choice schools, we have qualifications in place for students to be able to enroll. So if you've proven last school year that you were not able, that you weren't, that the teaching and learning part wasn't effective through virtual means, then virtual academy is not a good option for that student. So, but I, but I do say that, that if somebody has a clear medical issue that is exacerbated by COVID, we will address that, absolutely. We do not want to put a student in a situation where we're threatening their health and safety because of a return to a traditional classroom with mask optional. So we will definitely address that. And we, like I said earlier in a comment, we are addressing if a student has to quarantine. Dr. Hill and her CNI team are working to address how to best meet the needs of students who have to be under quarantine. And what we also know from the Strong Schools Toolkit is that if everyone is masks, is masked, and they're exposed to somebody that has COVID, if they're within three feet, if they're three feet or greater, they don't have to quarantine. So the failsafe is get vaccinated, have COVID, and it'd be 90 days after, within 90 days of having COVID, and you're not quarantined, or wear masks. And if you're exposed to someone that has COVID during wearing a mask and you're wearing a mask, and I'm within three to six feet, then that I don't have to quarantine. So, so that is, that, that's the guidance. So, you know, I would just say that, you know, we have a lot of options for people on the table. We've had those all year. We've reopened virtual academy three separate times, and we will provide an opportunity for students who have health concerns if, if we need to do that. And like I said, email me, brian@schultz, or email johnbasilese@john.basilese, and we will address that.
Well, I'm glad that, that's why I wanted to make that, because I did create quite a few of those. And keeping up the numbers, that's my other thing. I do want to make sure we do that, because we have seen a very large increase. State right now at 10.6, and we are at nine points, what was it, 9.6 we're at right now. So that is something that we definitely want to stay on top of. I think Union County's 11.6 right now, so please keep us updated on that, because I think that's very important.
I didn't do a good job of stating my second goal, but let me say that, that I think that, you know, the second goal is not to go remote. We learned last year from the learning loss and the results that we've seen is that students learn, most students, not all, learn better face-to-face and in-person instruction. Not only does that address the social emotional needs that we so desperately missed last year in seeing people in person and being able to, to see people's expressions and things like that, most students do. Now, some students learn really, really well virtually, so I'm not, not citing that at all. But what we saw last year from the results that we got is that students do better in person in a number of ways, not just academically. And so we want to avoid having to go virtual. We do everything, and this Board needs to do everything in our power to avoid going all virtual again.
And that's the comment I made last week. I think if we went with coverings, I would rather do- I think if we went with coverings, I would rather do this than have to go that way because as you just mentioned, face coverings will do, help a lot of times prevent that, as you mentioned earlier, because you don't have to do the quarantines if both parties were wearing a mask.
Yeah, it has to be both parties.
And that's been proven over and over. Some people may argue that point, but I can tell you, I have not had a cold in almost two years where before I did that, I didn't have one. So, I can just prove for myself. Now, people may argue that point, but I used to have them all the time. But that's the, the things that I have requested. If I think of anything else, I will email my chairman. Thank you.
And you did get your slide information today, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, Mr. Burr, any comments or questions?
I've got a lot to say about this, but better not. But I thank you, Brian, for clearing, clearing that up. And, and if you're asking me if I'm changing my stance on optional, no. And, and I'm gonna tell you why. I'm not trying to be on a high horse and I'm not trying to make this political. But until this government keeps illegal aliens by the thousands coming across that border without masks, with COVID, putting them on buses and sending them all over the United States, what, we're just beating our heads against the wall. Because these numbers are gonna continue to rise and we're gonna be having the same discussion day after day, week after week.
Are we serious right now?
They're contradicting each other.
No interruptions, not from board members or if anyone from the audience. I want everyone recognized to speak, okay? Every board member has a right to say what they need to say and that's just the way that goes, but no interruptions. Okay, but no interruptions.
Do what?
Okay, I'm calling the discussion. No more.
All right. Anyway, I've made, I've made my point. It's not a political point. I don't care who's in office. It's wrong in so many ways and that's just, you know, I get one vote and I have one opinion. And I understand why parents have concerns. I, you know, I got grandkids in the school system. I'd be really done to, you know, to put them in danger if I thought it was that bad. But we have to quit being hypocritical about this situation. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Walter?
I mean, since last week, the CDC has changed its guidance. That's one thing we should think about. It is a fluid situation. And you did say almost a third of our students chose to do virtual last year. So, that is a, a whole lot. But on the other hand, you know, we, we know students don't wear masks properly. We know students wear the same mask day after day after day and it's still not, that's not very healthy either. So, I think we should continue to discuss it. I think we should continue to look at the numbers. And I think maybe if it's getting worse, I think the governor will make a decision that'll take away our option. Right now, we do have the option. So, let's continue to look at things. School hasn't started yet. Like you said, we have a little more time to look.
Thank you. Ms. Blackwell?
I'm, I'm just gonna echo what I said last week, which is that I think that our parents should have the right to decide what they want to do with their own children. And if they don't feel safe being in school, then that is why we offer the virtual academy. That is why there's many programs out there for children to be able to be educated at home, if that is the case. And, you know, what I want is for parents to be able to take the decision back into their homes and, and do what's right for their children and their families. And I do believe that if folks are maintaining the distances that we have, have asked to be done and, and I certainly know that we will strive to make that happen. I have no doubt in that at all. If teachers are staying six feet away from children, if children are staying three feet away from each other. Children seem to do pretty well with this virus and the numbers really do show that. If you really look at the data when it comes to children and COVID, at this point, I haven't really seen anything that indicates to me that, that they're gonna do any worse than they do with a common cold. I will say that working in healthcare, I've seen the numbers of RSV increase tremendously. And if you don't think for one second that RSV is not a deadly virus to children, you might want to do a little more research on that. So, I'm gonna stay where I was last week and continue to be that parents should have the right to choose what they want to do for their children.
Thank you. Ms. Sandage?
I feel that not every parent has a right to choose with this decision. We've got several parents who do not want their kids at school with mask optional and we are doing nothing for those parents. We are not opening up the virtual academy. We are not offering a virtual option for those parents. So, every parent does not have the right to choose what's safe for their child. We do have children, as Ms. Carpenter indicated earlier, that have health reasons for not coming to school with other children unmasked. But we also have those children who don't have that and that may have a parent or that may have a loved one at home who is immunocompromised that can't get a vaccine. So, I think, like I said just a few seconds ago, we are not offering choice to everybody and that's so unfortunate.
Ms. Berry, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Board Chair, esteemed board members and those joining us in person and streaming from home tonight for the opportunity to speak about these important issues. I especially appreciate the intentional space we are holding to respectfully discuss this important issue in the best interest of students, teachers, and families. As I mentioned last week in my absence, our fantastic CCS teachers, data managers, instructional technology coaches, curriculum writers, MTSS coaches and administrators across our district are already excitedly preparing to safely welcome CCS students back to school this fall. And many, including myself, are looking forward to a safe, sustainable, high-quality in-person learning and working experience for the 2021, 2022 academic year. However, since our last meeting, the CDC has adjusted their recommendations again after learning more about the Delta variant. And these recommendations are as follows. The CDC recommends universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to schools, regardless of vaccination status. They have added a recommendation for fully vaccinated people to wear a mask in public indoor settings in areas of substantial or high transmission. They have also added information that fully vaccinated people might choose to wear a mask regardless of the level of transmission, particularly if they are immunocompromised or at increased risk for severe disease from COVID-19 or if they have someone in their household who is immunocompromised at increased risk of severe disease or not fully vaccinated. Finally, they have added a recommendation for fully vaccinated people who have a known exposure to someone with suspected or confirmed COVID-19 to be tested three to five days after exposure and to wear a mask in public indoor settings for 14 days or until they receive a negative test result. The recommendations from the CDC regarding schools are made in order to ensure the safest learning and working environment for all with minimal disruptions to student learning in terms of setting and schedule changes such as last year's Plans A, Plans A, B, and C, which I would like to note that our fantastic educators in our district make look far easier than they actually are. My fear is that if the CCS policy about masking remains optional, one, students and teachers will get sick and two, the overall learning and working experience will be inconsistent due to mandated quarantine periods that could eventually result in school shutdowns and unexpected periods of virtual learning, as we are already seeing in some close by charter schools that have already started their school year. As of today, CCS is three weeks away from welcoming students into buildings on the first day of school, two weeks away from welcoming all staff, and one week away from welcoming our brand-new beginning teachers at orientation. And the virtual academy has hired their teachers and received their allotments. So, it would be extremely difficult to ask them to open their enrollment again with such little time to prepare and to expand their numbers. But complying with CDC recommendations seems to be the simplest and safest way to prepare for a sustainable, high-quality in-person learning and working experience, which is the only learning option that we have been preparing for based on the feedback given from teachers and parents last year. To put it simply, masking will help us prevent having to revert back to Plans B and C and similar learning experiences to last year. It will also help decrease the number of mandatory quarantines. So, as decisions are made tonight regarding reentry and safety guidelines, my hope is that we may all keep the newest data-driven scientific recommendations in mind for the best interest of our CCS students and faculty. Thank you.
Madam, Madam, after questions? Sure.
Does anyone, and this is just anybody who might know the answer to this, know how they actually test for the Delta variant?
I would love it if my mother was present to answer that question. She works in a lab at a health department, but I can't speak for her tonight.
Okay. Well, I have asked this question to several healthcare providers that I, that I know. And the basic answer that I've gotten is that they don't. They don't know how to test for this Delta variant unless they send the sample to one of the research hospitals that are testing for this variant. And they are not doing that with every sample of COVID testing that they receive. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so just kind of a summary. So, our task force that was put together last year, the process and the guidelines are still now in place. So, that's what y'all will start with now, right, as school begins with Wolf Meadow being year-round, early college, all those, and then the new school year for the traditional schools, right? So, we'll go back into getting reports just like we did last year.
Right. I mean, our, the handbook, so to speak, is, is really the strong schools toolkit. The localized, the localized COVID-19 options that the task force created are more local to various kind of schools. We took it a step further and looked at, you know, transitioning between plans. We looked at utilizing spaces. We looked at substitute options, those kinds of things. So, it took it a step further than the toolkit. So, it was kind of icing on the cake of the toolkit.
So, we'll go back to using those guidelines and parameters. All right, okay, good. And then the Cabarrus Health Alliance always, every Monday, updates all of our information, the numbers, the positivity rate, all the information that-
Yeah, the Cabarrus Health Alliance meets every Monday with the county leader. So, that includes all the municipalities, the mayors, as well as the county government and the school system. And then on every Thursday, the Health Alliance meets with the two Cabarrus County school districts, Kannaple City Schools and Cabarrus County Schools. So, we get a two-for-one with the Health Alliance each week.
So, that's how we get our updated information prior to our board meetings.
That's correct.
Right. So, again, I will just say, we will continue to get the latest information. And if this board feels the need to have a different conversation, we have an opportunity to get that on agenda several times a month, okay? All right. With that being said, I will turn it over to our superintendent for superintendent comments.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Brian, are, since we're talking about implementing the task force recommendations, have we gone step by step through those to make sure that we're putting in place for the year-round school? What was recommended and what everyone agreed on? So, for example, if we meet this here, then this is what happens. If we meet this here, this is what happens. Is that what we're doing right now?
Are you, so what do you, I'm not sure I understand your question.
So, the recommendations from the task force suggest that we do certain things when certain things happen. If our number is this at the hospital, this is what group we're in. If our number is this from here, this is what group we're in. Are we following that for the year-round school?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're good to go where we are, is what I'm trying to figure out. So, the task force recommendations are what's happening at the year-round school and we are in the green for us to be doing everything we're doing right now.
So, the majority of what we follow are the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Strong Schools Toolkit. So, that, that really covers about 90% or 95% of what we follow on a daily basis in the schools. The, the, if you're talking, are you talking about the data and where we are in terms of the data? So, we are right down the, the middle in the data in a moderate impact in terms of looking at community spread. So, the, the chart that I send you every week has, most of our COVID indicators are in the moderate, which is the blue column, the middle column. And so, I'd say, let's see, seven, seven of the 10 indicators are in the moderate column and three are in the green column, which is the, the little to no, or which is in the containment column. But those really apply specifically to building transmission, schools on Plan C, and the level of concern for staffing. So, because we only have one school currently in session, those really are pretty minimal, those three indicators. But the rest of them in terms of the number of cases that we have per week in the five to 17-year-old age group or the age group of 25 to 49, those are all in the moderate, the number of cases that we have, new cases weekly, the number of hospitalizations, those are all in the moderate range.
Well, this is the last question. So, if a parent is at the year-round school and they do not want their kid there mask optional, do they have any options?
Not at this point.
Okay. So, also, I just want to address, someone had mentioned one of the other schools, but the early college has its own mandates and requirements that our students and staff have to adhere to. So, that is not our decision. Correct?
Right. The early colleges, they adhere to the requirements at the Rowan Cabarrus Community College because they're on their campus.
Okay. And with that, is there any other comments or questions regarding the discussion? I think we've moved 12.02 to the front by default. Anything else? All right. Mr. Schultz?
So, I'd like to, first off, I'd like to welcome Dr. Kupicki and we'll work to make your transition as smooth and seamless as possible. So, we look forward to meeting you in person on the 16th. And also, we completed a big milestone, completed summer jumpstart last week. We had over 3,000 students attend summer jumpstart over a six-week period of time. And I just want to thank all of the staff that worked, the bus drivers, the teacher assistants, the school nutrition workers, the teachers, the clerical staff, the curriculum instruction staff, the, the site administrators. I mean, just an amazing job. And then there were a team effort, people that weren't assigned to summer jumpstart that helped out too. So, if the, a lot of times, our school assistant principals and principals jumped in to, to really help out in situations. So, and our school resource officers from Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department, as well as the City of Concord. It's really a, a community effort. And also, our school nurses. So, we had school nurses who do their duty all school year long and then also stepped up to work during summer, summer jumpstart as well. So, it was just a really, I'm sure I'm forgetting somebody, school custodians. I mean, we had just had such a team effort on this. And so, I'm just thankful that we were able to provide six weeks of additional learning for our students this summer to help reengage them in face-to-face learning and then also support their learning as they head into a successful school year this year. Also, you mentioned Wolf Meadow was mentioned. So, Wolf Meadow, they are in session and are doing so well. They have, they were, I was there on the first day. It was so great to see those students and their smiling faces and threw masks, by the way, because they were masked then. And I rode the bus. I was so thankful to be able to, to go on that 45-minute journey and have a new best friend that's in first grade now and got to walk him to his class on, on the first day of school. So, that was exciting. So, great job to the staff of Wolf Meadow and parents and students for engaging there so well in July. And then also, our early colleges were mentioned and they have their first day of class this Wednesday. So, we're looking forward to welcoming them, them back in person. And we have some great administrators and teachers and amazing students attending those schools. So, we are starting school, folks, and then we come back to school for our traditional schools on- schools on August 23rd, so the staff is busy preparing for that and getting everything ready for our students on their return. So we're excited about this school year and look forward to welcoming everyone back soon. Thank you.
Thank you. And will the board receive any type of report? I mean, I know that's a first-time year.
We have that scheduled in September.
Oh, that's great. Great. Thank you. Okay. And with that, we're going to move on to 10.01 with our committee reports, and I'm going to start with Ms. Adcock.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to let the students know and parents that we're still taking applications for the Board of Education intern program. We have several students that have applied. We have got students that are coming in the first semester of the year, and then we'll have a second set of students coming in on the second semester. There is an actual program that we are creating that will have a lot of different areas in our school system where the students will go through that. It's going to be very nice, robust. They'll have some leadership opportunities as well. That application is listed under the Board of Education tab on the website and also under, I think it's on our website, that's where it is. I don't, I don't think we have it anywhere else. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other board members have any other reports from your liaison positions?
Shack committee did meet like last week, I think, School Health Advisory Council and whatever, the mental health plan. And then also, we had some additional funds from the ABC that came in, and they talked about how best to use that. And essentially, that's bringing in some more people to staffing, so.
Thank you. And now, we will move on to 10.02, and I'll ask Mr. Jay White for board attorney reports.
We are good to go. We don't have anything to report at this time.
Okay, great. That's good. Okay. So now, we will go to our items under number 11, which is our consent agenda for August the 9th, 2021. And we'll start with 11.01, our Beginning Teacher Support Plan, and we'll have Ms. Angela Wood to the podium, please. Good evening. Just key up your mic. Yeah.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Schultz, and our viewing audience. I appreciate you having me tonight. So our Beginning Teacher Support Program is designed to support the growth and development of our beginning teachers, and the state requires that we review the plan annually for board approval. There are several key personnel involved in the Beginning Teacher Support Program. Those include Dr. Keisha Khan, the Interim Assistant Superintendent of HR, myself as the Beginning Teacher Support Coordinator, and at the school level, school administrators, lead mentors, and most importantly, our mentors. Our mentors are the teachers that are working with our beginning teachers on a daily basis. We're excited this year that we will have our new employee orientation at West Cabarrus High School in person next week, August 9th, 10th, and 11th. The first day will be for first-year beginning teachers, and will include sessions on Beginning Teacher Support as well as classroom management. Day two, we will have our veteran teachers new to the district as well as first-year beginning teachers, and the sessions will include North Carolina Teacher Evaluation Process, a session on exceptional children, Teach Like a Champion, as well as a Curriculum and Instruction Overview for our experienced teachers. And day three will be for first-year teachers as well as our new related services personnel, and there will be sessions from our Curriculum Instruction Department as well as an overview for related services. Some of our highlights, we have our very own Ashton Berry on day one, who will be presenting the mission and vision for Cabarrus County Schools. We also have on day two, a Cabarrus Spotlight Fair. We have 16 vendors this year, and we have raised over $5,000 to provide meals and gifts for our teachers. And then on day three, we have our very own Amy Hicks, who is a 35-year veteran of Cabarrus County Schools, was also a Teacher of the Year finalist this year, and she will be presenting our keynote on day three. Our beginning teachers have, are provided with several resources, and those include The First Days of School book by Harry Wong, Teach Like a Champion by Doug Lamoff, as well as access to a Canvas course for beginning teachers and a Beginning Teacher webpage. The two books that they're provided are incorporated into the professional development during new teacher orientation as well as throughout the school year. In addition to orientation at West Cabarrus, they're also provided a school orientation. This is an opportunity for them to really acclimate to the school, meet key personnel, work with their mentors, start getting their classrooms set up, and really work on planning for that first week of school to welcome students. We also provide additional support for our residency teachers. Those are teachers who are coming to us without an education background. We have a partnership with the North Carolina New Teacher Support Program. So these teachers are provided individualized classroom coaching, a two-day professional development institute, as well as professional development throughout the school year. They're also provided a book called The First Years of Teacher, The First Year Teacher's Survival Guide, excuse me, by Julia Thompson, and are provided a 10-day orientation if they are hired past when we've already done our orientation. So any late hires, the state requires that we provide them an orientation. Also, all of our beginning teachers will be provided professional development throughout the school year from our Curriculum and Instruction Department, focused, with a focus on our elementary math and reading for first-year teachers. In secondary, that will be on math, reading, social studies, and science. And then our exceptional children teachers will be part of a three-year cohort for additional support as well. As mentioned throughout, the Human Resources Department oversees the Beginning Teacher Support Program and oversees new employee orientation, as well as annual lead mentor training, mentor training, mentor support checklist, Beginning Teacher licensure, and Beginning Teachers, the Beginning Teacher Support Program review, which is held every five years. So at the school level, our administrators provide incredible support for our new teachers. They assign their mentors and really look for someone who is either in the same grade level or same content area to make sure it's a good fit for the beginning teacher. They collaborate closely with their lead mentor to make a plan for professional development throughout the school year so that their beginning teachers are getting the specific needs and coaching for their school. They provide coaching and support to the beginning teachers as well as to all of the teachers at their school, and they oversee and monitor the process. And then our lead mentors are teachers who serve as a lead mentor in their school. So every school has at least one lead mentor. A few schools have two that work together. And these lead mentors really serve as the liaison between the school, myself, the school administrators, the mentors, and the beginning teachers. They collaborate with the administrators, they collaborate with the mentors and beginning teachers, and facilitate that professional development throughout the school year at the school level. And then they also oversee the documentation that's required. So our mentors, as mentioned earlier, are truly our key personnel in making sure that our beginning teachers receive the support they need. They are teachers who volunteer their time to meet on a regular basis with beginning teachers. They, the expectation is they meet a minimum of once a week, but oftentimes, this is daily, and they are checking in with these teachers regularly. They really help the beginning teachers with whatever it is that they need support in. So that could be classroom management, lesson planning, instructional strategies, curriculum resources, best practices. It's really, you name it, they're there to support that beginning teacher. So the state oversees the evaluation process for beginning teachers, and all of our beginning teachers are on a comprehensive evaluation plan. And what that means is that at the beginning of the school year, they will complete a self-assessment. Then they write two to three professional development goals. They work with their mentor and their school administration on those goals, and that's part of their professional development plan that is reviewed throughout the school year. They also receive three full administrative observations, one peer observation, which is not by their mentor, because their mentor is, the purpose of the mentor is to be supportive. And then at the end of the year, they receive a summary evaluation by their principal. So every year, I ask for advice from our previous cohort of beginning teachers, and those of you who have seen this presentation multiple times, have seen the advice, advice over the years. But this year, there, there's always a theme, which is to lean on your mentor, as the first quote says, "Don't be afraid to make mistakes. Meet as many teachers as you can. Observe as many teachers as you can. Learn about the school and their vision and ask questions." The second one there, "Go to your mentor and ask for support at any time. Find ways to relate to your students and build those relationships." And my favorite this year, "Give it your entire heart. Have fun and be open to learning." And that's what we want for our students each and every day as well. So that is all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Comments or questions? And I'll begin with Ms. Sandage.
Thank you for your presentation, and additionally, thank all the teachers that have applied and are going to be beginning with our school system. We truly need you. I want to also thank the teachers that are here already. This board really truly appreciate what you do every day for our children. Without you, I feel like we are nothing, and I'm going to say that again. Without you, our educators, you, we are nothing. So we definitely appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
So I will also echo that as well and say that I've seen, you know, this, a couple of years in a row with the mentor program, and so thank you to the teachers that participate in this. This is so important and vital to the new teachers that are coming on to have folks that they can lean on for advice and just really be able to get their feet wet in, in doing this, this job. And so we, we thank you all very much, and thank you for this program. It's really a wonderful, wonderful program that we're able to offer. Thank you.
Mr. Walter.
I also echo those comments. I think it's a great program that we have, and y'all have done a great job of implementing it. How do we show appreciation to the mentors?
The mentors do receive two days of flex time to serve as a mentor, and then part of the lead mentor's role is to constantly show appreciation to mentors and beginning teachers at their school.
The lead teacher role?
Excuse me?
The lead teachers, would you say?
The, the lead mentor. They, they provide lots of kudos and support and work with the administrators to, to see what they want to do at their school level to support their mentors and beginning teachers.
Thank you.
Mr. Furr.
It's hard to add to what they said, but I totally agree. And as usual, you guys done an outstanding job, and this is a wonderful program.
Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter.
And I have to say kudos also, and you've done a wonderful job, and I think that's why we've been able to keep so many of our teachers, because you have done a wonderful job, and just keep up the great work.
Thank you. Ms. Adcock.
And I would just ditto what everybody else has said. I think mentorship is sometimes not looked at in, in light of what it can do for people, especially those that come into our system that don't really know a lot of what goes on. And I think for teachers, you know, they are the most valuable asset that we have as a school system. So I would just like to say as well, is what Ms. Keisha Sandage said, is that they are very much approved for what they do in our, with our kids, and we support them as a board and appreciate what they do for us every day.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very appreciative, actually, for the focus on those that have not been teachers before, but are maybe coming from another, so there are lateral entry teachers who are coming maybe from another profession, because oftentimes, those teachers were not afforded the student teaching experience. So I think specifically focus, focusing on them when the, literally, the first time that they're with kids is with the classroom that they have as, as teachers. So I appreciate the, a focus on them. So thank you.
Thank you. And board members, assuming this is all good for consent agenda?
Good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's held for our business meeting next Monday night. Just make sure that you sign up, and we'll get you on the agenda. There's a place for public comment at the business meeting every month. Okay? All right. Let's move to 11.02, Architectural Contract Approval for Arbrown-McAllister Elementary. We'll have Mr. Tim Louder and Mr. Brian Combe. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Over the last month and a half, Cabarrus County Schools, alongside with Hartzell and Williams, have been negotiating with Yates, Kreitzberg, Hughes, Architects of Concord for the Design and Construction Administration for the new Arbrown-McAllister Elementary School Replacement Project. I'm happy to be presenting to you tonight the AIAB 133 2019 Standard Form of Agreement between owner and architect, where the construction manager has construction addition for your approval. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the contract itself.
Okay. And I will begin with Ms. Adcock. Any comments or questions?
I don't have any comments. Just thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter.
Well, of course, my only one, is it within budget?
It, it, yes, ma'am, it is within budget.
Second thought, and I would, I think I mentioned to you earlier, there are some board members that had not seen the site that we were looking at. Is there any way that we might, could have a time when some of these board members, and I myself would like to see it again, that we might could go see us, see this site?
Sure. I have no problem. I'll be happy to coordinate that with you, Ms. Grimsley, and Brian, Mr. Schultz.
And that's, that's my only comment.
Absolutely. We can do it. You know, they actually always start that on the calendar with all the different projects we have going, so you'll just be adding it like we normally would.
Gotcha. Okay.
Great. Okay. Mr. Furr?
No comment.
Mr. Walter.
The month and a half, is that a part percentage of the total cost? Is that how it's arrived?
That's the total, that's the total cost, and it's a percentage of the, the budgeted contract amount that we have estimated.
Is there anything in this standard contract that's not standard? Everything's?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll add, this is the first time we've used this contract, which requires to have a little bit more negotiation, because it's the first time we've used it with the language specifically for construction manager area, so it's pretty thorough to go through this time.
So we used something different last time?
Yes, we actually used AIAB 133, I think, last time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember the, the number on the AIAB, but this one is specifically designed for the construction manager delivery method.
Okay. Thank you.
Which means we have to use this form, so.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Blackwell.
Just, I'm really excited for this project to start, as I know a lot of people in the Concord community are, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Sandage.
Did we get Chris?
I'm sorry?
Did we, did we get Chris to help with this project? I know there was going to be some discussion about that.
No, no, ma'am. She is not a part of this project.
Okay. That was, that was my only question.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm assuming all board members are good for this to be added to the consent agenda next week as well? All good? You're good?
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Next, we will move to 11.03. And at this point in time, I will ask that to, I need a motion to move Policies 4400, 6125, and 7205 to the action agenda for the August 9th, 21 meeting for purposes of both first read and temporary approval. For temporary approval pursuant to Policy 2420, in order to ensure that the policies go into effect by the first day of school, which is a special event that will take place before formal action can be taken at our next business meeting. So move. I have a motion. Second. I have a second by Ms. Adcock, and I'm sorry, motion by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
We have Mr. Walter and Ms. Sandage descending. Okay. Thank you. And now, I will ask Ms. Sue Burns, who's already there, policies for approval on first reading. And is it okay if I just go ahead and do it like we normally do?
Sure. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
With them going on the action for next week, are these the same versions that were put into board docs?
So, yes, it is.
Okay.
And these will go on the action, where the rest of these will just go on the consent agenda if, if nothing else is pulled. Is that, is that good for you? Okay.
Do you want to explain that? It's temporary approval, right? We still have to approve it?
That's right. And actually, let me be real clear. It's only going on the agenda, so there might be something different done as we take action, but we're putting it on the action agenda and not just the consent agenda right now. So we've not done anything. We're just placing it on the action agenda.
Okay. I just don't want to be behind.
Yeah. I hear you. Let me just be clear. It's just going on the action agenda, just not the consent. Okay. So Policy Number 1742-5060 responded to complaints. Policy 2310, public participation at board meetings. Policy Number 4135, tuition for discretionary admission. Policy 4400, attendance. Policy 6125, administering medicines to students. Policy 7205, and actually, I think I quoted those, and I should have pulled those, standards of professional conduct. So you know which ones are on your action agenda.
Correct. The last three, actually.
The last three. That's right. So the ones for consent agenda. Board members, any comments or questions? And I know you've had time to review those. So I will begin with Ms. Sandage.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear. For the last three, we are going to temporarily approve them?
No, we are only placing them on the action agenda, not the consent. We're not doing anything with them tonight except moving them to the action agenda for next Monday night, not the consent. So that we can have discussion on them.
Okay. And as they are written in Board Docs?
Yes.
I heard that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Is that the only question you had? Okay. Ms. Blackwell?
No question.
Mr. Walter?
On 4130, 4400, 100, right. What's the difference between domicile and residency? Can someone explain that change?
Is there someone here that would like to answer that? John or Jonathan, either one?
I'd be happy to. Domicile is a designation generally in the law of somebody's state. Domicile, in what state they are domiciled. And there are several factors that courts take into account in determining whether someone is domiciled. It's not just where they happen to reside, but have they taken other steps to establish a particular state as their domicile. Residence is just a plain easy, in what house do you live? In what house do you sleep? That's, that's your residence.
Okay. So we've been using the domicile term for a long, long time. You've just used it to make it a little easier, is that?
In some instances, the term domicile is appropriate. In others, it's not. And the word should be resident.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Furr?
No.
Ms. Carpenter?
None.
Ms. Adcock?
None.
Okay. So just for clarification, 1742/5060, 2310, and 4135 will go on the consent agenda. And 4400, 6125, and 7205 will go on the action agenda for discussion.
Okay.
Are you good?
Thanks, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Okay. We'll keep you for 11.04, Policies for Approval on Second Reading. And I'll do the same thing. Policy 1510/4200/7270, School Safety. Policy 1610/7800, Professional and Staff Development. Policy 2610, Board Attorney. Policy 3300, School Calendar and Time for Learning. Policy 3460, Graduation Requirements. Policy 3610, Counseling Program. Policy 4040/7310, Staff Student Relations. Policy 4125, Homeless Students. Policy 4150, Student Assignment, Transfer and Program Choice Enrollment. Policy 4240/7312, Child Abuse and Related Threats to Child Safety. Policy 4335, Criminal Behavior. Policy 6120, Student Health Services. Policy 6320, Use of Student Transportation Services. And Policy 8341, Limited Claim Settlement. So these are on your second reading, board members. We've had these for a second time. And I will open up questions or comments. And I'll start on my right with Ms. Adcock. Comments or questions?
No comments or questions.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
No.
Mr. Furr?
None.
Mr. Walter?
Sorry, I got a couple. 3300, School Calendar. We had some changes. Why do we not use terms that we would normally use all the time? You have, I'm talking about Section B here, you said have composed of both a pupil calendar and a teacher calendar. Don't we call it an academic calendar? Is that not the term that we use here? Why wouldn't we incorporate that language?
That's in Section B, you said?
Yeah, page 104.
We can, we can do that.
Why not use the terms that we're commonly using anyway? I don't think I've ever heard you say pupil calendar.
Well, and I haven't. So this was a PLS update. I put in what they recommended. So if you all would prefer academic student calendar, we can do that.
And you know, I think that's a good explanation. Some people don't understand. These come down as recommendations. So it's not yours or ours or anybody's preferences. It's what comes down.
Correct. Especially this batch that we have right now. These are all but one, I think, our PLS recommended update. So yes, we can change a word.
Great. Is that good for all the other board members?
Can you just clarify PLS for the public, please?
Yes, sure. PLS is Policies to Lead the Schools. And it's a policy update service we subscribe to as a, as a district. It's through the North Carolina School Boards Association. And as, as laws are changed or issues come up within the state, they see trends, they will recommend changes to our policies. And they've embedded, you know, their attorneys are the ones that make the recommendations. So that's when I say the PLS updates, we get them twice a year and sometimes a few scattered in between there. But for the most part, we get them two times a year and we try to use those to keep our policies updated.
Thank you. This might actually be a question for John. And probably another similar, similar thing. On 6320, Youth of, Use of Transportation, or Student Transportation Services, do we not, wouldn't this be appropriate to include the McKinney-Vento Transportation in this section as well? I think that's kind of unique that we do. But anyway, that's.
I'm sorry.
The McKinney-Vento vans that we're using for student transportation, that's not right, that's not mentioned in there. Should it be?
So, Mr. Walter, you're saying that should we, are you saying that we have a specific line item such as like a number six that specifically?
It's something that Cabarrus County School does. It may be that all the districts in the state does not. So, and if you're saying this came from a state, they may not have that included.
So I just want to make sure I understand what you're asking. Are you asking that we add a specific item that designates?
If you need a recommendation, I didn't intend to make a recommendation. I was asking the question, but I would think if it is part of our transportation system, it ought to be.
So, yes. So vans are a part of our transportation network, particularly for McKinney-Vento students.
Maybe paragraph for a line item.
Sure. May I examine it for just a moment, please?
And I'm okay with the change. We could maybe talk about it at a different time. Just move forward with it.
Well, these are on second reading. So they really should have come in a form of an email to staff prior to this. This is the second time we've seen them and it's been through Policy Committee. So
Correct.
I would really like to see us do a little bit better job of looking at these and getting our questions out to the staff before we get here. That way it prepares them and we all know what you're talking about.
I understand. It popped in my head, it popped in my head as I reread it this evening, sitting down, and that popped into my head. So otherwise, I'm happy with approving the change and discussing it again in Policy Committee at a later times.
Is that something that you feel like needs to go back to the Policy Committee? I mean,
I do.
The board needs to make that decision as a whole?
Correct. But you asked me if I think it does.
Right. But that's why I'm asking. Are you saying not just a verbiage change?
I'm saying if we use, this is about our transportation system. If we use advanced student transportation, I think we ought to consider putting that in our policy because that's what we're doing.
So, Mr. Basileis, Ms. Burns, do you think that's appropriate for this, this one to go back to the Policy Committee?
We certainly could. When I look at a school system transportation services, it basically says that the first priority is providing transportation to eligible students to and from school. So I would, I would think that would include our students who, who are McKinney-Vento.
So is there something that speaks to you that it doesn't include everyone?
Yes, it covers activity buses. It covers yellow buses. But it does not cover vans.
We can certainly take this back to the Policy Committee. I don't want to.
Mr. Schultz?
I'd just like to address number four. It says, Activity Buses and Other Vehicles, Meeting Federal Standards, Maybe Used to Travel. And then it goes on. So I would say that covers it. We don't have to use vans. It's just something that we do. Most districts use yellow buses to do that. They actually hire transportation services for that. So I just wouldn't, I don't know that I'd want to limit it, limit us by zeroing in on vans.
Okay. That particular paragraph is related to student athletics. But, but okay. Again, my suggestion, my review of that, that popped out to me as something that Cabarrus County Schools is doing that maybe it's not being done on a state level. And to consider that.
So I would just ask, is there any other board member that thinks this one needs to be pulled from second read and sent back to the?
I'm not suggesting pulling it for second read either. I think the change is fine.
Board members? Ms. Sandage?
I'm okay with how it reads now.
Ms. Blackwell?
I'm good with how it reads.
Mr. Furr?
Good.
Ms. Carpenter?
I mean, nobody else seemed to have a problem with it in, in policy.
And just for the viewing office, you're on the Policy Committee. So I just want to make sure everyone understands.
Nobody said anything about it.
Okay.
Brian thought that got it covered.
Okay.
Nobody said anything when we had it in policy. Nobody mentioned it. That's what I'm saying. Nobody else mentioned anything about it.
Okay.
That's something I can say at this point.
You're not keyed up, Ms. Carpenter.
No, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Nobody else said anything else when we were in policy. And if y'all don't think, I mean, Sue, I mean, what do you?
It's, it's, it's up to the board. If you all want to approve this and then bring it back to the committee in the fall when we meet, when we get our policy updates, we could do that.
Perfect. That's correct.
That's what I think would be good. Instead of, go ahead and do it now and then bring it back later. It's fine with me.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Ms. Adcock, any comments or questions?
No, I'm, I'm good with it the way it reads.
Okay. So, any other comments or questions on any other policy? Are you all good for second read policies to go to the consent agenda with the one change that we had? Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Burns. Now we will move to our action agenda. Approval of Curriculum Associate Subscription Agreement. And we'll have Dr. Crystal Hill to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Schultz, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, I am bringing you the Curriculum Associates iReady quote. I'm bringing this this evening because the amount of the quote exceeds the amount that the superintendent or his designee has the authority to approve. So I will go through these slides with you. iReady is something that we already use here in our district. But next year, we would like to do something different since we are post, kind of post COVID, coming back five days a week for in-person instruction. So we'd like to use iReady K through 11th grade. And the way that we would like to use it is with the diagnostic that will then inform our planning and instruction and with the goal of accelerated learning. So I'd like to quickly go through what this quote entails. For kindergarten through fifth grade math, we will be using the diagnostic and also the core and supplemental instructional tools along with the teacher toolbox. This is content that we've used for the last couple of years. So there is no change with having iReady for K5 math. For third through fifth grade reading, the same thing, the diagnostic, core and supplemental instructional tool, and the teacher toolbox. This is a change. The last two years, the state used iStation, very similar in name, but iStation as the K3 Literacy Assessment. And since we were using the K3 Literacy Assessment provided by the state, we use that K5. The state did make a change this year in the assessment that we are using. So we are requesting to use iReady for third through fifth grade reading. And here's just some examples of what that may look like. Again, the teacher toolbox. Sixth through eighth grade math and reading diagnostic and supplemental instructional tool. We have used this in the past several years. The difference this year is the district is picking up the full cost of the diagnostic and also the supplemental instruction. And what I mean by supplemental instruction, it's not for every student, but students that need additional support through their skills plus classes. Ninth through 11th grade would be a diagnostic for math and reading. And this would just be given at the beginning of the year. This will give our teachers basically a deep dive into what students know and what areas we need to focus on with individual students. This is a sample report from students that are obviously in the lower grades. But you will see for each student, it breaks out by the domain exactly where they are. So teachers can dig in deep and not waste time with our instruction. This next slide is a chart, which is comparison of last school year through the current year. So I'd like to point out a few things to you. You'll see, as I said earlier, that we have iReady K11 here for each of the content areas. Again, I'll revisit and say that for K5, we used iStation reading for the last two years. It was provided by the state for K3. We picked up the cost for fourth through fifth. iStation also has an instructional piece that goes with it as well as iReady. The new tool that the state has selected to use this year does not have an instructional tool. So that is why we will need to purchase iReady for fourth and fifth grade. I'd also like to point out fourth through eighth grade math and reading. Again, we've used this in the past. We've done a cost share with the schools. However, due to some additional funding sources, we're able to pick up the cost of iReady math and reading for our middle schools and relieving them of that burden at the school level. Our funding model that we would like to use is our ESAR funds. This was approved by this board back in April. I believe it was on Slide 17 where we talked about using the iReady assessment K11. And then we will also use our textbook funds just as we have in the past to purchase this tool for this school year. Are there any questions?
Board members, any comments or questions? And I'll start with Ms. Adcock.
Just, is this an annual cost that we will incur? I know you just said that there's something different we're going to use next year. So that will change probably. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. So our plan right now is that we would continue using iReady for our elementary schools and our middle schools. The way that we pay for it will be slightly different. We do not plan to use iReady as a diagnostic assessment for our high schools. We just felt like that was a need this year since some of our students we haven't seen since, face to face since March of 2020.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Furr?
I have no questions.
Mr. Walter?
So the 25% increase is because we have additional students or because everything, we're not paying, we're paying for, help me understand exactly what the difference is.
The increase is because we didn't use it all last year. So if you'll notice, for 2021, we used iReady math. And so you see that amount was $321,000. We used K5 was iStation. So
Okay. So we've changed.
We paid for it just in a different bucket. Now it's, it's over in the iReady bucket. K8 Math and Reading, we paid for it last year but did a cost share with our schools. So the district did not pick up the full amount. We also are increasing the number of instructional licenses for 68, just because we anticipate needing to serve additional students through our Skills Plus program. And then ninth through 11th grade math and reading diagnostic, we've never done in the past.
Okay. And I think you've said this before, but this is the best product out there to help teachers assess their students?
This is the tool that the state required us to use this summer statewide. It's also a tool that we've used for several years here in our district. So for continuity, that's why we're recommending.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
Speaking as the parent of a rising 11th grader who is absolutely terrified about where he is right now with, with these, I'm grateful that we have this diagnostic tool because I know that I'm not the only one who's a little bit nervous about how behind some of our kids might be. So yeah, I'm glad we're doing this. Thank you.
Ms. Sandage?
Thanks for the presentation. I don't have any comments. I was able to look at it and I didn't have any questions prior to. Thank you.
Ms. Barry, would you like to make any comments as the teacher liaison?
I've used iReady a lot in the past. And the diagnostic tool especially is a wonderful tool for teachers to use and to get to know their students. So thank you so much for your presentation, Dr. Hill.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion to approve the Curriculum Associate Subscription Agreement as presented?
So move.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And by default, 12.02, which was the discussion of the return to school COVID safety. I think we've covered a lot of points tonight and things have been said. And what I would just like to ask is that, you know, we're getting ready to start moving into the new school year. And this may look different than what we all anticipated and were hoping for. And we're just not really sure how that's going to go even tonight. But just know that the board will be giving all the information every week, just like we normally would have done this past year as we ended. We'll begin with the same processes and protocols in place so that you get the information that you feel you need. I would just ask that we always be respectful of each other. We all have an opinion. We all have a vote. It's extremely important that one is speaking. We don't override the other. And actually, it speaks against it in parliamentary procedure. So I would just like to make sure that we're very respectful to each other. You know, I always give you an opportunity to speak and say what you need to say. But I would just ask that we, you know, we adhere to our process that we have in place for conducting meetings. And with that, I would like to say, Mr. Schultz, anything?
Yeah, I just, I want to clarify just to make sure that, so when Ms. Sandage asked me about did Wolfmeadow students have options? So they did have options, like currently, we do not have additional options. But prior to the start of school, they did have the option to enroll in Virtual Academy. And they also have, the students that live in that district also had the option to attend a traditional calendar school. So I just wanted to clarify because I gave a very short no, but I wanted to clarify that a little bit. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. So with that, we will say goodnight to our viewing audience.
I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to amend a previous vote or previous discussion about the mask optional. I'd like to see if we can, because we, we will